Good evening. At this time, please remember to silence your cellphones and be advised that our proceedings are recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. I will call to order and convene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace for July 24, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Imam Mahmoud Harmouche of the Riverside Islamic Center, and he came all the way from Corona today, probably in the traffic. We will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles. If you would, please stand for invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of God, the merciful, the compassionate, Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim, dear respected mayor, honorable City Council, friends, it is my honor and pleasure to be with you today for this first-time invocation in the Grand City of the Terrace, in the city of Terrance, Grand Terrace. It is indeed, as a Islamic center of Riverside, one of the pioneer Islamic centers in Southern California for the last forty years, serving the community and providing spiritual, religious, and social environment for our community who are in need of such services and to be integrated into the society at large. It is indeed the situation lately has been calling for more understanding and communication, and we feel a little bit under fire for all the claims and accusations, which many of it's really unfounded and called for. The Muslim community is part of the Southern California community, the state, and the nation, and they share great many values, if not most of it really, from the same spiritual background of the Abrahamic faith of Jews, Christians, Muslims, and others. And they share the values of families, education, work ethics, and many others. And based on one of the scriptures of the Holy Quran, we have that God said, "Oh, people, we have created you from a single bear of male and female and made you into families and tribes and nations. Indeed, the best of you are those who are biased, sincere, and helpful to each other." That's in chapter forty-nine, verse number thirteen. Dear respected, honorable people here tonight, we would like you to really consider the Muslim community who are present here as part of the beautiful fabric of this city, state, and nation, and provide for them equal protection like everybody else, which is you do in a very diligent way. I pray for your success, your families, your leadership, and I pray that God protects you and our society at large, and I hope that you will continue to provide the services and protect the lives, the liberties, the freedoms, and the well-being of our people at large. Everyone here is just a neighbor's, friend's, colleague, and whoever that next door to be protected and saved and not feel threatened by any of the unfounded claims and rumors and what have you regarding any community for that matters. And indeed, I hope and pray that God will bless you all and protect all of us and save our nation from all kinds of evil. Thank you very much for the invitation, and I hope to see you again in the near future. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Imam. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Councilmembers Wilson and Hussey are absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, acted upon by the City Council at one time without any discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. At this time, I'm going to ask that item two, the approval of minutes from regular meeting, July tenth, be removed. Are there any other requests for removal? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the balance.
I move the balance of the consent items.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Mayor Protem Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item two of the minutes, I wanted to ask for a correction. This is page six of the packet. It's under the consent calendar. The third paragraph in, Cynthia Fortune Assistant City Manager explained that the City Council receives a health insurance reimbursement stipend in the amount of $640, and I believe what she said was a reimbursement up to an amount of $640. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
So I would like to amend that. Are there any other issues? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just brief, two brief comments under Councilmember Bill Hussey's comments on package page seven. He mentioned that he met with a gentleman by the name of Grant Ward, W-A-R-D, instead of Grant Ford. I attended that meeting with him, and the gentleman's name is Ward. The bottom of page seven. My second comment has to do with, on package page ten, the discussion we had regarding the landscape assessment district. The gentleman from Burt Tech is referred to as Mike Arreguín, and his name is Arreguín. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Can we entertain a motion with those amendments?
I move approval as amended.
I second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Member Henderson, Mayor Protem Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. We'll move to public comment at this time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. A brief response from staff may also be requested to questions raised during this time, and a matter may be agendized for a future meeting. Are there any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to City Council Communications. Bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Kenneth Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to congratulate Habitat for Humanity, the community volunteers, the Lions Club, all those who attended the wall raising this past Saturday. It was a great event, inspiring event, really gained an appreciation for the patience, perseverance, and commitment of the families involved. It took us a while to get to this point. A lot of people deserve credit, and I just wanted to compliment all those involved, Director Molina, Mr. French, the mayor, and others who have prosecuted, so to speak, this particular project over the years. And so it was a wonderful event and happy to see such progress. I also attended the Planning Commission workshop on specific plans, and it was a very good workshop, provided by presentations by outside consultants and good interaction between the commissioners and staff. I think the most important takeaways from that session is that during the course of the discussion, the commission was advised by staff and legal counsel, and that advice applies to the City Council as well, that it is important not to take a position on a project not yet before the Planning Commission or before the City Council. We're all aware of a specific plan application that's been made in the western part of the city, and I think most, if not all, of us look at that project with some optimism, but it's important that we not take a position, official, unofficial, public, private, or otherwise, with respect to that particular project. And the training that the Planning Commission is going through is not project-specific, it's with respect to the development, processing, submission, and review of specific plan applications. So the training that the Planning Commission received, and by extension, the City Council, will apply to any specific plan application going forward. But I think it's important that we, maybe myself in particular, appreciate the fact that taking a position for or against a particular project can make us susceptible to challenge and also require, in some cases, the recusal of the offending party, so to speak. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended the board meeting for Omni-Trans. The agenda was quite light. We did have an extensive discussion about political signage on bus shelters and buses. And after the hour discussion, it was decided to allow the acceptance of political campaign materials for this year, while they bring it back to the board for further discussion. And we have Omni-Trans plans and programs, the twenty-fifth, and that's when we start getting very deep into the actual operations for the next year, and then there will be no board meeting in August. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So I attended the July eleventh, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, and we looked at items for the Southern California Regional Rail Authority for the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. Additional construction support services were approved. We determined that the procurement and conversion of an additional aero-passenger rail service vehicle, which is a diesel multiple unit, and it will be converted to a zero-emission multiple unit, which is, it's a really nice way that they're going to go with this project. They're trying to find ways to keep our air clean while putting in this new mode of transportation. So we voted that this deserved an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. The board also postponed a shortway subdivision quiet zone project in San Bernardino, and they're doing so until the Southern California Regional Rail Authority secures funding for this. There have not been any complaints at this particular crossing, and so there was not an urgency to move forward with it without appropriate funds. We approved the planned specifications and estimates for construction of the rail storage and maintenance facility for the diesel multiple units that will be used for the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. This will be a storage area in the city of San Bernardino. We also authorized the invitation for bids. We approved the Omni-Trans specialized transportation services budget for the Consolidated Transportation Services Agency activities for the coming fiscal year. We adopted a resolution authorizing the allocation of local transportation funds and state transit assistant funds for the fiscal year of 2018-19. We allocated the State of Good Repair Program, population share, and operator's share funding to the following projects. One of them is in San Bernardino County area, the Santa Fe Depot Structural Rehab and Repair. It's a really interesting facility. If you've not been out to the Santa Fe Depot, it's a beautiful, beautiful building, and it is something of historical value that unfortunately costs a lot to maintain. We also looked at a solar alternative energy project for Omni-Trans, approved bus stop improvements for the mountain transit, the Morongo Basin Transit Authority, facility lighting upgrades, bus stop improvements in lighting, lot resurfacing and engine overhauls. We also approved the Victor Valley Transit Authority replacement vehicles and midlife bus rebuilds. City of Needles is going to have some preventative maintenance, and Southern California Regional Rail Authority will have some MetroLink capital maintenance approved as well. We amended the policy of the Valley Senior and Disabled Transit Program to allow for a monthly pass-through to Omni-Trans of seventy-five percent of the program revenue received. We approved the fiscal year 2018-19 transit operator funding allocations. We approved the Programming Trade Corridors Improvement Fund. This is a savings for the U.S. three ninety-five widening from State Route eighteen to Chamberlain Way, replacing a like amount of state transportation improvement funds. And we received information on potential impacts in the San Bernardino County area for the, considering that the Senate Bill one could possibly be repealed in November. They did an overview of each and every project that is now underway, that currently has funding, or is in some way impacted if that funding goes away, and they are looking at alternates for funding to go forward if, in fact, that funding is repealed. On July fourteenth, I was able to take advantage of the Tai Chi in the park, and that was a very nice and calming day. The weather was perfect. And then that night, the movies and music in the park at Veterans Freedom Park again, just a beautiful evening, and the weather was wonderful. I'm not sure how Tai Chi was this morning. I hope that it was nicer. I did not, or I guess it wasn't this morning, I'm sorry. On Saturday, Saturday, I was at the Habitat for Humanity wall raising, so I did not do the Tai Chi in the park. But that ended up being a very beautiful morning as well. So we've had some lucky weather, and I think we're paying for it today. On July eighteenth, I attended the California JPIA Annual Meeting, and the takeaways for this is that in the budget this coming year, they're allocating one million dollars to classroom training and workshop training for all of their member agencies. And this is something that member agencies, staff, and council members can take part in as part of their membership in California JPIA. The idea is that they believe that they can go a long way towards reducing claims, which saves the pool-at-large money by allocating this money upfront. We also talked about the Twenty-third Annual Risk Management Conference that's scheduled for September nineteenth through the twenty-first. This is also a benefit to the member agencies and their staff. They promise that there will be experts to help you overcome fear of disaster, cast aside threats from those attempting harm, and remove doubts as to whether your resources will last. So it should be a very good conference. I just wanted to say again about the Habitat for Humanity wall raising, thank you to the Lions, the Grand Terrace Lions Club for being there and serving. We had volunteers from Wells Fargo Bank and Bank of America raising walls, and we had members from the Living Word Inland Empire Church there, as well as the two families who are set to have those homes once they are built. And that will be my report, so we will move on to the rest of our agenda. We have no unfinished business. Our new business begins with the selection of voting delegates for the California League of Cities 2018 Annual Conference. Madam City Clerk?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Henderson, Debra Thomas, City Clerk. Tonight before you is a staff report with respect to selecting voting delegates for the California League of Cities 2018 Annual Conference. The staff report supports City Council Goal Number Four: Develop and Implement Successful Partnerships by Working Collaboratively with the Public Sector, Local, Regional, and State Agencies to Facilitate the Delivery of Services to our Community and to Secure Funding for Programs and Projects. The League's annual legislative conference is scheduled for September twelfth and runs through September fourteenth. Each member is encouraged to select a city representative to participate in the annual business meeting at the General Assembly, which is currently scheduled for twelve-thirty p.m. on Friday, September fourteenth. Back in January of 2018, due to the resignation of a former council member and the appointment of Councilmember Henderson, there were some vacancies that were reassigned with the current council. First one was Councilmember Hussey was selected as the delegate for the League of California Cities, and then Councilmember Doug Wilson was selected as the alternate. The League of California Cities has requested that the attending cities submit before August thirty-first their selected delegate and alternates, up to two, if you choose to do so, before August thirty-first, 2018. And the adopted, excuse me, the attached resolution will satisfy the League requirements and enable the City of Grand Terrace to participate in that annual business meeting scheduled for September fourteenth. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay. Councilmember Henderson, you have a question or?
Comment.
Okay. Can I come back for the comment?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for their comments and deliberation. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The staff report indicates that I think one or two council members are registered for attendance at the event, and I just want to make sure that staff is aware that I would like to attend. I had assumed, much like the City-County Conference, that council would be scheduled to attend in advance, but if there's some indication that from, if you need some indication from council regarding attendance at the event.
We can certainly get you registered.
This is the time and place for me to voice my desire to attend.
Of course. We'll take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on delegate and alternate?
I just have a question.
All right.
Is Doug Wilson attending? I don't know.
Currently, he is shown interest, however, has not firmed up his plans as of this date.
Yeah, because there's a confusion. The last clerk put the league as, you know, a committee. What we have actually done is whoever's going, we pick from the folks that are going. So I'll be happy to make a motion to approve this since they are going, but there's no appointment of people from.
Is there a, do you want to add a second alternate in case Councilmember Wilson does not attend?
Yeah. And if he doesn't go, then Ken Henderson is the second alternate.
Okay. So the motion for Mayor Protem is that Bill Hussey will be the delegate, Councilmember Doug Wilson will be the alternate, and Councilmember Ken Henderson will be the second alternate. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Mayor Protem, your voting button.
Do we need to vote again? Okay. Please vote again.
Councilmember Henderson?
Would you like us to raise our hand if we vote yes?
I've pressed it twice now, so maybe the third time's a charm?
Third time will be the charm.
All right.
All those in favor?
Say aye.
Say aye. Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson, Mayor Protem Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item seven, which is adoption of the Grand Terrace Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Director Sandra Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Sandra Molina. I am the Planning and Development Services Director, and I'm pleased to present to the City Council the adoption of the Grand Terrace Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. As the council knows, the staff, along with the community stakeholders and planning members, have been working on this mitigation plan for quite some time. So just a little bit of background, in 2016, the city did receive a grant from the County Office of Emergency Services, and we used the grant to hire a consultant to prepare this plan that needed to be updated. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is updated every five years, and so we did enter contract to have a consultant prepare that. And the City Council saw a draft in September of twelfth of 2017, a draft was presented to the council, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And after that, we forwarded it to California Office of Emergency Services, which is required by law, and they did approve it and forwarded it over to FEMA. And on July twelfth, FEMA let us know that they reviewed the plan and that it is approvable pending the City Council's adoption, so that's what we're before the council this evening. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is attached to the report, identifies high-risk areas that in a natural disaster could become problematic to the city, such as earthquakes, landslides, flooding, and wildfires. It also identified these potential impacts from these natural features that we have in the city, and it outlines mitigation strategies to refuse, excuse me, to reduce future risks. The adoption of a hazard mitigation plan provides various opportunities for the city. One of probably the most important ones is that with the hazard mitigation plan, should there be a national disaster, a federal disaster, or a local disaster, with this plan, we are able to request reimbursement for the cost that we expend in responding to the disaster and also for recovery efforts. And so having this plan in place is critical for getting that reimbursement done. It also provides us grant opportunities or opportunities to apply for grants. There are pre-disaster mitigation grants, flood management assistance grants, earthquake state assistance, and emergency managed performance programs. So if there is a disaster that is nationally recognized, grants get opened up after that event, and so all agencies with hazard mitigation plans can apply. And the disaster doesn't have to be related to the type of grant that opens up, and so if there's a fire, significant fires that are identified as national disasters, then that could free up funding for not only wildfire, but potentially to address storm drainage issues or slope drainage issues. And so just having the plan, having a disaster recognized throughout the country, and then different funding programs open up for the city. So also, some of the strategies in the grant, or excuse me, in the hazard mitigation plan identify educational efforts. And so what we would like to do is partner with our Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee, and also, once we reestablish CERT, to partner with them to take the lead on those educational outreach efforts, such as earthquake preparedness, slope stabilization information to our residents who have slopes on their property, or earthquake retrofitting. So we have the opportunity to do that once we also adopt our hazard mitigation plan. So with that, I'll ask the council that they adopt the resolution that's attached to the staff report, adopting the hazard mitigation plan, and then we will then forward that to FEMA. And I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Director Molina.
different funding programs open up for the city. So also, some of the strategies in the grant, or excuse me, in the hazard mitigation plan identify educational efforts. And so what we would like to do is partner with our Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee, and also, once we reestablish CERT, to partner with them to take the lead on those educational outreach efforts, such as earthquake preparedness, slope stabilization information to our residents who have slopes on their property, or earthquake retrofitting. So we have the opportunity to do that once we also adopt our hazard mitigation plan. So with that, I'll ask the council that they adopt the resolution that's attached to the staff report, adopting the hazard mitigation plan, and then we will then forward that to FEMA. And I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Director Molina. This is a long time in coming, quite a plan. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, oh, City Manager has a comment he'd like to make.
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. I did want to just stress the fact that because the council is passing this hazard mitigation plan, that what that, as Molina indicated, what that really means is that we have identified potential hazards that are surround around the city, like the Mount Vernon slope, and that might need to be stabilized. And so as Miss Molina indicated, is that when there is another national disaster, if it's a fire, it's flooding, because we have identified an issue in our plan, we have the ability to, when the funds are available, to apply for any of those funds to help us mitigate potential risk of some of our hazards, which is extremely important. That's going to open us up to be able to apply to multiple federal grants throughout the country.
All right. Thank you. I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item?
I don't have any speakers.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Henderson.
Mayor, just have a brief comment. I wanted to compliment everyone involved in this project. The plan itself is several hundred pages long. It cured my insomnia over the weekend. I admit, I only got about halfway through, but the important thing is that all of the work's been done, certainly before my tenure here on the council. And it's not very sexy to develop local hazard mitigation programs, but they are vital. I've worked in two prior cities where there was a 100-year flood and a 500-year flood, and we had the appropriate plan in place, and we were able to recoup 98% of our cost and significant recovery costs to help rebuild and to help install the proper storm drainage systems that didn't exist prior to those events occurring. So as the managers indicated, this really places the city in the right position. If you've heard any rumors about me putting up my home for sale because I'm in the high fire zone to base at Blue Mountain, it's not entirely true, but it was sobering to read through that part of the plan itself. So I think I've got to do something regarding my vegetation, but thanks to all, council members, staff, stakeholders, CERT members, anyone and everyone involved in this process, it's significant. It's not the type of thing that gets, we get bandied about and people get patted on the back, but they should be in this instance. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, or Councilmember Henderson. Any further comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, adopting the Grand Terrace Local Hazard Mitigation 2017 Plan Update.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson. Second by Mayor Protam Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Mayor Protam Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to Item 8, which is a continuation of the 25th Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Contract 94-797. The County of San Bernardino, Assistant City Manager Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, Councilmember Henderson. Staff report to you tonight is to review and approve the 25th Amendment, our law enforcement contract. This contract supports two goals: ensuring fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of contractual agreements and expenditures, and maintaining public safety by continuing adequate staff levels for law enforcement services in our community. Grand Terrace has contracted with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department since 1994, so this is now our 25th amendment for about $1.94 million. As stated in the staff report, total number of hours that they service is a little over 17,000. That actually does not include dispatch. I am guessing dispatch provides about a couple of thousand hours, so for $1.9 million, Sheriff's Department provides us with about 20,000 hours of staff time. So staff is recommending that we approve the 25th Amendment with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. That concludes my report. Lieutenant Wolf will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any questions for staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move the recommendation to approve the 25th Amendment to the Law Enforcement Services Contract 94-797 with the County of San Bernardino, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protam Robles, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Henderson, Mayor Protam Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 9. Fabulous 40th Anniversary Dinner Committee, Mr. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have before you a recommendation to approve the Fabulous 40th Anniversary Dinner Committee's recommendation to hold a family picnic to celebrate the city's 40th anniversary. So so far this year, we've had a number of events to help celebrate the city's 40th anniversary. We had, let's see, okay, movies, music and movies in the park. We've had the Blue Mountain Hike, the Grand Terrace Art Show, the Grand Terrace Community Day, and we all, so now we're focusing on the city's anniversary party. Back when the council first approved these programs back in January, one of the things the city wanted, the council wanted to do was to see if the existing Historical and Cultural Committee's birthday party could serve as the city's anniversary party. So one of the first charges that this committee had to work with was to meet with the city's Historical and Cultural Committee to see if the city's annual birthday party could serve as a part of the city's anniversary dinner. And so the committee members for the city's anniversary, 40th anniversary parties, Ed Giroux, Becky Giroux, Naldo Donnelly, Carolyn Payne, and Hanny Bennett. And so that committee met on June 25th to discuss ideas and concepts, and then on June the 2nd, 2018, they met with Historical and Cultural Committee. After the meeting with the Historical and Cultural Committee, the Historical and Cultural Committee basically indicated that they felt that the, a citywide event that the anniversary dinner committee was envisioning would be overwhelming for the city's birthday potluck dinner. And so then the committee met again, this 40th Anniversary Committee, the committee met again on July 16th, 2018, to discuss having not a city anniversary dinner, but hosting a family picnic at Terrace View Elementary School, sort of like a family picnic with the use of the cafeteria and playgrounds would provide for ample space for various types of events. They wanted to, their concept was to invite local food establishments to sell their products at a reasonable rate, invite local businesses to have a booth at the event, also build community awareness of local businesses, and to feature the high school band, have them play as part of the entertainment. And the overall goal for the committee was to create this family picnic so they could celebrate the past, present, and the future of Grand Terrace. And I think, I kind of just jumped through my slides, there's the committee, and actually we have some committee members here tonight, and they're available to answer any questions the council may have. And as I said, this is the timeframe to be met on the 25th, and July 2nd, and then again on July 16th. And the committee wanted to host the entire community, past, present, and the future, and the committee felt that a family picnic with games, activities, affordable food, opportunities to learn about city history, businesses in town, and celebrate life in Grand Terrace would be a great way to help celebrate this activity. They also chose the date of October the 6th, 2018, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Because of all the other activities that are occurring in November, they have the, we have the Veterans Day event, we have the Country Fair, and then we also have the lighting ceremony that occurs all in November, so they felt that pushing this back to October would be a better opportunity. The committee was also aware, but wanted to move forward with the fact that we're giving ourselves a very tight timeframe, but we do have some resources that were allowed as part of the program. The overall budget for this is $3,000, but the program will be based primarily on donations and fundraising. So one of the concepts that we would do is we would look to bring on someone to assist us with helping coordinate the various activities. Initially, we sat down and we broke it down into seven different categories: food, facility, entertainment, games, promotion, any kind of construction activity, and then event coordination. And so we believe that we can utilize some of these resources to have someone come in and help us with the coordination, along with the heavier cost being the relying on what Grand Terrace does best, getting the community members to come forward and participating through booths at the various events. So with that, Mayor, I'm available for questions, and the committee would like to say something that are also here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Duffy, with respect to the $3,000 that's been appropriated for this endeavor, you mentioned additional private fundraising. Is there a budget that's been established by the committee which would be used to raise additional funds?
There hasn't been a, we haven't met yet to establish that budget. I think we're actually scheduled to meet on Thursday to really sort of lay out the groundwork in terms of where we go from there. The $3,000 was actually set aside as a part of the 40th Anniversary Committee, and so that's funded. So what we'll do is we'll sit down and look at additional costs, and then we'll come up with a strategy to raise those additional funds separate, so there will be no, we don't anticipate spending any more general fund, city proceeds, other than $3,000.
Thank you. My second question involves, I believe that there was some discussion, at least conceptually, on the 40th year anniversary celebration activity, that one of the events might, might, I stress, have a car show component. And I don't want to suggest that the committee consider that if the committee has already finished its business on the approved activities, but it's something that might garner community interest, at least from this particular community member.
Absolutely. And sir, I believe that based upon the venue which the committee has chosen, the space, there'll be ample space for something like a car show. And what we want to do is we want to bring all facets of the community together, and so that sounds like a great opportunity to even get maybe some additional community members like yourself to help spearhead that car show component.
Having done a few of those, it is time-intensive, and if the committee is favorably disposed to consider that, I believe I could assist in some respect and also maybe identify some folks in the community who might want to carry the ball in that respect.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right. We'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council. Sounds to me like it's the beginnings of a wonderful event. Are there council members inclined to make a motion on this item?
I've got to find my page, but I will. I make a motion to approve Fabulous 40th Anniversary Dinner Committee's recommendation to hold a family picnic to celebrate the city's 40th anniversary.
In making my second to the Mayor Protam's motion, I want to thank the committee for all the work that they put in so far and will be putting in the future. I second the motion.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protam Robles, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Henderson, Mayor Protam Robles, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to Item 10, which is our Fabulous 40th Anniversary Veterans Day Event. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. As I indicated earlier, we have had a number of activities that we've gone through so far this year, and we also have coming up in the future, we had a Veterans Day and Fireworks Show event that was going to occur as a part of this, the Veterans Wall of Freedom's event. And one of the things that we came back to the council, we got some feedback from the council, and also after the meeting, is that some, the fireworks, fireworks show at the end of the meeting, at the end of the event, can cause some strain on some members of our community. So I went back to the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee, and we discussed about the negative feedback that I received for the fireworks show. Part of the whole process was to make this an event to celebrate veterans, also to identify and celebrate the fact that our Veterans Freedom Wall really is going to be, if not already, a treasure of the inland empire and should be a state and national treasure when it's all said and done. And so during the discussion that we had at the Veterans Wall Freedom Committee, some wise members said, why don't we do a laser light show? And so I set out, and I found a company that does laser light shows. And so we huddled back together, and the committee said that they would like to do that, and so it's now going to be the Veterans Day event along with the laser light show at the Veterans Freedom Park. And the event will consist of the following: publicize Veterans Wall of Freedom in the Veterans Freedom Park in Grand Terrace, celebrate veterans on Veterans Day for the city's 40th anniversary in a special ceremony, and create a memorable event that creates a tourist attraction for the city of Grand Terrace. And so what the event will consist of, it will consist of a food truck event in the beginning, then there'll be the Veterans Wall of Freedom Ceremony inductees, and you have here's a sample letter that we're asking you to approve. This letter will be signed by all the, signed by the mayor and the council, and it will go out to every city in the inland empire. That's every city in Riverside County and San Bernardino County. We will be asking them to nominate one individual to place upon the Veterans Wall of Freedom, and we're also inviting them to attend our ceremony. Now, they will also have the option to, if they have more than one veteran, they can become a sponsor, pay for multiple people to come on board. But what our overall goal here is to create this environment where every city is aware and has some connection to the city of Grand Terrace, Veterans Wall of Freedom. And so the cost for this overall program is, the current cost that we've had in the budget for the last couple of years is $2,000, and that's through fee waivers, but as a part of the 40th Anniversary Party, we allocated $3,000 more dollars, and then we also had a budget to donations of about $20,000. And the $20,000 was to put on the fireworks show and other activities. The laser light show is not as expensive as the fireworks show, so we'll be saving a little bit there, but we just think that this is going to be an exciting event, and like the council to approve the draft letter for communities of the inland empire to authorize the city manager to send this to municipal offices in Riverside and San Bernardino County. So with that, I'm available for any questions the council may have. We also have some members of the Veteran Walls of Freedom Committee here to also ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Are there questions of staff?
I have a question.
Mayor Protam?
So we're doing a fee waiver for ourselves?
Well, historically, the Veterans Wall Freedom Committee did the program all by themselves, and that was just, that was just approved in the budget. So we actually probably will not need that because we're actually being integrally involved in this event.
Yeah, and then I was going to ask you, since you notified me that my person resigned from the committee, I wanted to extend, if Karen Suarez would like to be, you know, the replacement, if you could contact her. be, you know, the replacement, I, I, if you could contact her.
Absolutely, Mayor, I, I will. And, uh, Ms. Suarez is also part of the Park and Recreation Committee.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I failed to mention that this particular activity, uh, went to the Park and Recreation Committee also to, to discuss the, the event.
Okay.
So they will also be a partner with us in this event.
Okay, that's good, because it kinda went from dinner to...
Right, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, recreation.
Okay, so we're talking about Veterans Day, but we're not talking about the picnic anymore?
That's correct.
Okay. I have, uh, councilmember Henderson, did you have com, uh, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, um, I, the, um, the, the draft letter, uh, I feel, um, needs a, a little bit of work. And, uh, I don't mean to state that critically or disparagingly, um, but I think that if it's going out to all of our neighboring communities, we want it to, uh, to reflect exactly what it is that we're trying to accomplish, and also the standards of excellence that we aspire to.
Yeah, I, I did have a couple of brief, um, items that I wanted to change in the letter. Specifically, um, in the second paragraph, although the Veterans Wall of Freedom is in Grand Terrace, I would like to add after that, it was built to honor all veterans. And maybe there's another way to say it to, to maybe, to really bring out the idea that it isn't only for recognizing veterans in Grand Terrace. And then, um, the, the term "inducted," I'm not sure if that's a really, a, a correct depiction of what it is we're doing. My suggestion would be a word such as memorialized or celebrated, or, or some other term other than "inducted." Other than that, it sounds like councilmember Henderson has some suggestions for changes as well. What's the best way for us to go forward on doing that?
Is it possible that, um, we establish just a, a quick review little committee that we can just make sure that the, the mayor and the, and, and councilmember Henderson get a chance to, to review, uh, the document? Um, unless the mayor pro temp has some other comments?
Yeah, so what you're suggesting is that we have an ad hoc, um, so we could have the mayor and councilman Henderson serve that ad hoc, if you would allow me to make that motion?
Certainly.
Okay. So I move that we have, form an ad hoc committee to, um, oversee some of the communications for the Veterans Wall of Freedom, um, event, and that that would be our mayor and councilman Henderson.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Robles, second by councilmember Henderson. Miss, Madam City Clerk?
We had a speaker card on this item.
Oh, all right. Of, of all the times. I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Mr. Don Larkin?
Don Larkin, Chair of the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to express our support to the city's activities for the Fabulous 40th Anniversary in conjunction with the Veterans Day ceremony. And we will continue working closely with city staff to make this truly a memorable event. We realize there are some concerns about the fireworks and everything, and so I really like to thank Mr. Duffy for coming up with an alternative, with the laser show. I think this is going to be something really spectacular, you know, and very unique. And also be great as far as honoring our veterans and for the enjoyment of the community. One thing I also like to point out is for this Veterans Day, we plan to have the final improvements done for the Veterans Wall of Freedom. And this will include the two informational columns and the POW MIA table and chair. So this is also very good that we're having this even to really highlight this type of event. So I know I'll probably be up here before Veterans Day, but at this time, I also would like to invite everybody, including the public, to come to the celebration on Sunday, November 11th. And I'll be glad to ask, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. I appreciate your time tonight, and I appreciate your time and your committee's time on this project.
Thank you very much.
Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I'll close, close public comment and bring it back to council. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Robles and a second by councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmember Henderson, Mayor Pro Tem Robles, and Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 11, which is approve amendment number two for on-call Public Works Geotechnical Services. Director Allen French.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Henderson. Allen French, Public Works Director, present this item before you as a second amendment for the on-call engineering, uh, geotechnical testing services contract. This item supports the 2030 goal, uh, number two of maintaining public safety. We are beginning our second year of our five-year capital improvement program. Uh, this involves the story seal of 23 streets and grind and overlay of another 10. Um, this project needs to have geotechnical testing for those service, for those, um, construction, uh, activities. Uh, this amendment extends the existing contract to June 2019 and addresses a name change by the geotechnical consultant to TerraCon. It increases the limit of the contract of an additional $40,000, and staff is recommending to approve the amendment, excuse me, and to have the city manager execute the amendment. Cost for this, uh, contract is covered by the project cost. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Director French. Are there questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director French, the, uh, I, I support the project. I think it's a good thing. Anything that's gonna improve our streets is okay by me. Um, the staff report indicates it's a not-to-exceed amount, uh, but in reviewing TerraCon's proposal, they indicate that it's not, that it was not to be considered a not-to-exceed proposal. So I'm assuming that that's been reconciled and that the staff report and the agreement reflects, uh, the representations you made to council.
Uh, yes, sir, councilman. Uh, originally, um, the scope of work, um, exceeded the limit. And so we came back and talked to them about revising the scope, and it was, it was reduced to fit within the budget. So I think that was the change in the text that, that didn't get reflected.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, seeing that, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of, um, recommendation number one, approve amendment number two for on-call geotechnical services to TerraCon consultants, formerly CHG consultants, and recommendation number two to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two.
I second the motion.
All right. Motion by councilmember Henderson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmember Henderson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
Thank you. Onto item 12, which is authorize and formalize the loan from the wastewater fund to the general fund. Assistant City Manager Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmember Henderson. Staff report before you tonight is for the approval of a promissory note in the amount of $875,000 to formalize the loan between the general fund and the wastewater fund. The staff report, uh, supports a one goal: ensuring fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of receipts and disbursements throughout the operating fiscal year. On September 13, 2016, the city purchased property located on 22273 Barton Road. The total cost for the property at the time was $924,000 and change. Um, at the time, city council approved a loan for about $900,000 from the following funds. At the close of 1617, to avoid any negative fund balances on our fund, $25,000 of that loan was paid, leaving a balance of $875,000. Staff is requesting that we consolidate the loan, transfer it all to the wastewater fund, formalize it with a promissory note, um, as I said, I'm sorry, formalize the loan and consolidate the loan into the wastewater fund. So the loan terms as shown, uh, the first payment will be in 2020. The annual amount will be $87,500, and the last payment at the end of 10th, the 10th year will be the balance plus any interest accrued. Interest that is being offered is the local agency investment fund rate plus 1%. Total term of the loan is 12 years because we're requesting that the effective date of the loan be June 30th, 2018. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Are we intending to pay this loan off if we sell the property before then?
That is correct. Should property be sold, loan will be paid in full, plus any interest accrued up until that time.
All right. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson?
Ms. Fortune, if the, uh, if the council approves this agreement and the city, uh, makes the annual loan payments of $87,500, would that eliminate the possibility of this transaction, um, ref, being reflected in our annual audit reports in a negative fashion?
Um, no, it, it will, it will not. I mean, right now, when we closed our books for 2016-17, the loan was booked or recorded as a short-term loan. Short-term loans generally, as far as auditors are concerned, are for a term of one year or less. By the close of 2017-18, we would have needed to do additional paperwork, and this is what this is going to do. Yeah. It's going to book the loan as a long-term loan. Um, it does not affect our fund balance. Did I answer your question, sir?
I'm not sure. I, I, I just want to, what I'm trying to get at is, if we comply with the loan terms and we make the payments, then that should no longer be an issue with respect to the auditors since the law allows for these loans between wastewater and the general fund.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, did you have a question?
No, others already asked it.
All right, thank you. We will open it up to public comment then. We have no request to speak for. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
May I move approval?
All right, I, I will second the, uh, the item. So, uh, motion by councilmember Henderson, second by Mayor Mcnebo. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmember Henderson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
Great, thank you. We'll move to City Manager Communications, Mr. Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, I just wanted to remind the council of a couple events that are going to be occurring. Uh, we have Ferdinand on July 28th at Richard Rollins Park. This is the second of our series of four movies in the park. I'd say that the sandlot that we had at the Veterans Freedom Park was about 300 people. It was a, a very nice night. Uh, we did learn a lesson though, is that we can't really start the movie till 8:05. And so we just have the, the musicians play a little bit longer. And then we also provide an opportunity to acknowledge the, uh, the dignitaries that are there, and have them, if they want to say a few words, they're certainly going to do so around 7:45.
Do you have provisions in place for the weather and the temperature this time? You did very well last time. I, I expect the same this time.
We're working on it. And then we also have the summer swim program that is a, uh, this is our last weekend for the summer swim program. Uh, and then we, this year, we have shortened the timeframe. We're using the, uh, high school pool because it was of a few tweaks that worked out at the, um, middle school pool. But we were actually having a really good turnout, uh, with, uh, participants at the pool. We've had over the last, uh, two weeks, more than 75 kids show up, uh, for the event. And, uh, so the, it starts from the hours of, uh, it's lap swim at 10, uh, 10 to 11:30. And lap swim is a code word for no kids. And then, uh, at, uh, 11:30, it's open swim. And so the kids can come and everyone, everyone's having a great time. And, uh, it's been a really good, and this, this weather warns this, this type of activity. In addition to that, we have, uh, Zumba in the park on Saturday, uh, and that is, uh, I, I would just encourage residents to, uh, go to the Veterans Freedom Park. Uh, and we've got some really great teachers, uh, and it's Zumba, if you haven't done it before, it's, uh, the trick is just keep moving, you know, not to keep up, just, just keep moving. And then Tai Chi in the park was, uh, very, very interesting. And I, I would certainly recommend that, uh, if you want to learn about, uh, movement and actually sweat without actually doing too much, uh, it's really interesting. And, and, and Master Ewing is a great teacher, and it's a great setting in Susan Pettit Park. It's really a nice activity. And then we also have yoga in the park at, at the fitness park. Uh, and so one of the things that the parks commissioners are showing up to these events and they're letting people know that, you know, this is a trial program, and in order to continue these programs, we have to have participation so the residents can see that they really want this. And so if you are interested in this, in this program, please sign up and, uh, and, and join us at one of these three activities. And also, uh, this is an event that's actually occurring on the 26th. This is part of the Grand Terrace Branch Library. They have multiple programs, and this Thursday, they're gonna have the mobile zoo come out. And so that should be, uh, uh, an interesting activity. You know, working here in City Hall, most of the activities are in the community room, so we get a chance to see hundreds of kids, uh, partake in magic shows and puppet shows and all kinds of things. And they're having a really good time, so it's a very successful program for the, for the, for the library. And so with that, I'm done. Oh, actually, one more, I'm sorry. Uh, we also have the city's blood drive. Uh, we're working with American Red Cross, and, uh, we do need more, uh, participants. We're about at the 35% level. And so the blood drive is actually Wednesday, August 1st, 2018. And, uh, we look forward to having you stop by from 1:30 to 7:30 PM. You can sign up online, um, and through Facebook or, uh, through, uh, the city's webpage. And that's it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, um, I wanted to, um, ask the, um, the city manager if perhaps we need to have a special meeting to discuss the fire parcel tax that the county of San Bernardino is gonna be imposing. Um, there's a lot of, um, unknowns that maybe we need to, uh, have a chat about.
Like a community meeting?
Well, yeah, and for us, yeah.
Absolutely. It, it is an event that I believe, uh, that the community is unaware of, and that it is going to greatly impact them. Uh, and so, um, having a community meeting, sharing with them the information and what their options are, uh, I, I think is very important. And so if the council would like to do that, we can, we s-
Yeah, and one of the things that I think we might need to be prepared for is what are the options? Um, perhaps, you know, contracting with a, a city or entity closer to us, um, possibly looking instead of being part of a consolidated district, being, um, forming our own district and, and we're the governing boards and, some things like that.
Okay, we can certainly, uh, pull together, uh, information on what the, what they're proposing, and then what other communities use as options. You know, they have their own, they have consolidates with other, with nearby communities. Uh, we can sort of bring all that together in an agenda packet.
Oh, and one, one final thing. Um, I was interested too, because I read that our fire report, there was like a hundred medical assists, but like maybe one or two fires, and I think I'm being generous, I think there was one fire. So I'd kind of be interested in if nursing homes are a big user, you know, why, why are we subsidizing, uh, private business, those kinds of, of things too?
Absolutely. We can certainly, uh, get that information, uh, in terms of, uh, the call volume and frequent locations that they, they repeatedly go back to. We can bring that together. Um, I would, um, just note for the council is that we are currently on a cycle where this is the 24th, and where we normally meet every two weeks, uh, we're running across- the 24th, and where we normally meet every two weeks, we're running across where our next meeting is going to be three weeks. So if the council would like to meet in two weeks to have a special meeting, we can certainly do that on August the 7th, if the council would like to do that, or would you like to maybe take some time to consider a different special meeting?
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think probably the sooner the better. I think the county is approaching this with a degree of urgency for obvious reasons.
Okay.
So August 7th?
Okay, great.
Okay. All right. With that, we will recess to closed session. We have one item to consider in closed session, public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code section 54957B1. City Manager? So thank you all for being here tonight. For those of you that will not be here when we come back from our closed session, the next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 14, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting, and as you heard, we are considering, we will be posting a special meeting on August 7th. Thank you again for being here tonight and have a great evening. We are in recess. The council met in closed session on public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code section 54957B1. City Manager, I'm going to say that this is part of a process, and we did have discussion, we gave direction to staff, but there are no reportable actions at this time. So we will adjourn the meeting of July 24th. Our next regular city council meeting will be held August 14, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting, and stay tuned for announcement of a special meeting on August 7th. At this time, we are adjourned.